Okay, we have a quorum. We'll start with approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have the meetings for April 25th. I'm sorry, April 23rd, 2020. We have one public hearing. Rontus Run Dog Daycare, major conditional use application, determination of completeness. We have a pending application from Rontus Run Dog Daycare. Item number two is old Logging Road Timber Harvest, but I understand, Tad, that they pulled that application. You are muted, Tad, we can't hear you.
They have, they have pulled the application, they're going statewide.
All right, thank you very much. Under new applications, we have Bentley Warren, a conditional use permit registration of an existing contract yard. A Rundle Children's Garden, a major conditional use application. Then we have a couple of items under the land use ordinance that we will be looking at. Proposal to amend land use ordinance section 3.2 definition of front lot. And discussion with action, a proposal for the repeal of land use ordinance section 18.2C, citizen petition standards that we will get to, then there will be whatever other business the town planner may have for us, or any of the board members.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda, is there any discussion?
Can I speak to this? I'm sorry, this is David Lowry. Looking at the agenda, it says that the...
Excuse me, Mr. Lowry? Mr. Lowry? At this point, this is a planning board function only to determine the agenda? Do you want to have an opportunity later on? So, based on the agenda, planning board members in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hearing none, it is unanimous. Now, at this point, we have a, have a section for public comment if there are members of the public that have questions for the planning board that are not related to any items that are on the agenda. Andy? No, I guess not. Hearing none, we will move into the agenda. The first item is a public hearing for Rontus Run Dog Daycare, a major conditional use application, determination of completeness, a proposal to establish a pet daycare center in an existing riding stable located at 496 Limerick Road, Tax Map 27, Lot 2, in the R1 District. Kristen Woodard is the owner and applicant, and we are joined by Kristen's attorney, David Lowry. And I will open this at 7:06 for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this particular issue?
Can I speak to what the issue is for a second?
Yes, sir.
I tried to earlier. It says here that's determination of completeness. I spoke to Tad Redway the other day, and he indicated that in fact this was complete.
That is, that is correct, this is a complete application. If it were not, it would not have had a hearing.
Just started.
Okay. All right, then I'll go to the kitchen, I'll cook up some greens.
All right, the last time it moved really quickly, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We'll see what happens this time, right?
Okay. Is his guy on there?
I can't remember the guy's name, so I don't know.
I need to ask folks that are talking in the background to mute their mics when they do so. That will save me the trouble of having to mute you. It's rather distracting under this circumstance. Does the public have any questions or comments to make regarding Rontus Run Dog Daycare?
My name is Russell Sawyer, I live at 497 Limerick Road. And I have a question regarding the maximum allowed dogs at one time at this location for this dog here.
Okay.
Ten is all allowed.
Say again?
Ten.
Are there, um, will the dogs be the majority of the time inside or outside?
Depending on the weather, but mostly outside.
Will the dogs be in the back of the property or the front of the property?
They'll be basically on the side of the property.
Is there a fenced area where these dogs will be held at all times, or will they be allowed on free?
Yes, yes, it's a large fenced area.
Is there anyone else with any questions or comments? Hearing none, at 7:09, I will close the public hearing and open it to the planning board for any questions that they may have. I do have a question, Kristen.
Yeah.
The ordinance says that there will be a certified trainer as a full-time staff member. Who is that certification for?
I am a certified animal trainer.
Do you have a copy of the permit? Because we don't have one in the file.
I just emailed them to Tad today, he should have them.
Let me, let me find out if he got it.
Okay.
I don't have it, but I can go on, go to remote and see if it's in my email.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
Rich, does the ordinance say whether or not the trainer should be certified in training of dogs, or horses, or any animals?
It doesn't say in regards, the ordinance says a certified animal trainer.
Okay.
So, you know, you raised the interesting point that the, these are dogs, you could be training horses, you could have a certificate to train horses, but the ordinance is not specific to a breed.
A breed or a species?
I'm sorry, a species. It is not specific to a species. You can tell how much I know about animals, I just think animals are animals. It's like humans, we're all humans. Were you able to locate that, Ted?
Still getting in the red dog right now.
Okay.
I did not notice it this afternoon, when I was in the office all day, but I didn't notice it, oh, could be there.
Okay.
Back in my accounts.
Mr. Lowry, did you have any questions? You being the applicant's attorney.
Yes, I think that Kristen would accept, if you approve this tonight, it can be subject to the condition that she furnish the certificate from the state. Also, I guess I should point out that since pet care centers are permitted as conditional uses contingent on compliance of the performance standards, and I've heard nothing indicating that they're not in compliance, she's not in compliance of the performance standards other than this certificate issue. It's under main law, if something is labeled a conditional use, they sometimes use the term special exception as well, but if it's a conditional use, it's presumptively allowed. So, if she meets the criteria for issuance of the permit, you really have to grant it. The only, I mean, the difference between a conditional use and just a straight-out permitted use is, in the case of a conditional use, if you find that a particular location or particular proposal is such as it might constitute a nuisance at that location, at that point, you do have some discretion to attach conditions to ameliorate whatever problems you believe that the business of that location might cause, but that's about it. And if you can't find the condition, if you can't condition it because for some other reason, can't craft a, a condition which takes care of the problem, then you can deny it. But generally, they're presumptively allowed, there's lots of main cases on that subject. I don't know if you have much experience with that being an issue.
We've had a lot of experience with conditional uses.
Thank you. Good.
My question, my question for the applicant in regards to the type of, to the certificate of animal trainer, simply that's a condition, that's not a condition of a conditional use permit, that is a requirement of the ordinance.
Understood.
Through the chair?
Yes, Ted.
Chris, I have a email from you at 3:56, and that was a message from Eric Bartlett regarding kennel aggression and owner concerns, but I don't have your certificate here.
I sent them from Will's Coffee Center around, I believe it was around 1:00.
All right, I have, we have Bradford, would that be it?
Yes.
Okay.
I will, Brad.
Yep, there we go, thank you for making that verification for me, Kristen, yes, I have them. It says, it's upside down, but it says basically that, this is the same one you had before, wasn't it? Kristen, you...
Yes.
Year, School of Horsemanship, Meredith Manor, upon recommendation of the faculty, hereby confers to Kristen Sue Woodward the title of camp instructor?
There's three of them there.
Okay, that's why, okay. They're sideways, you'll have to forgive me while I try to read these things sideways. Must be funny, huh? This'll be great on the...
I will mute my show, sorry.
Thank you so much. Okay, Riding Master, she's got the title of a riding master with all rights, that's from the school. And then we've got a certificate here for camp instructor for horsemanship. And it's one, you said there's three, Kristen?
Yes.
Okay. One, must be one more up here. Got Riding Master, come on. One is Riding Master, come on, wow, this is really slow, I'm sorry, connections, it's going through three computers here. Okay, I have camp instructor, I have, um, camp instructor, I have riding instructor, and then I've got, it must be this, must be the last one here, riding master, that's what I've got. I thought you had an animal trainer one, or a horse trainer one.
That, those are all for horse training and teaching riding.
I don't quite know how I can put this out for the planning board, but, um, download it. Print it, maybe you should do that. Pull it up to the screen.
Email it to us right now, Sarah, can you just follow the email?
I think that's the only way I could do this. If you guys all have, well, you're all on your computers, which you are, so, we, you'll have to excuse me, it's, it's going very slowly, but let me, you go back, there we are, scan message. All right, I've got. So, it's been sent to all the planning board members at this point.
There it is.
Good deal, I'll get on this then, I might as well, since I just saw this.
Yep, see it.
You got it? Okay.
Yep, I got it on my end.
Okay.
Yep.
And then here's the others, information from Chris from Eric Bartlett, and that I'm gonna get out of that.
I think the question for the board is whether or not those three certificates indicating that she is a riding master, a camp, a camp instructor, and a riding instructor, you find satisfactory for a certified animal trainer?
To me, it's, that's quite a stretch, I'm looking for anything, any words that say training, I don't see anything there.
Can I speak to this issue?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Kristen has very limited means, and I'm representing her under the Volunteer Lawyers Program because she cannot afford counsel in this case. And I really urge you not to make her go through the expense of filing another application. That's why I was suggesting before that you could attach a condition to the permit, that it would not issue until she satisfies you, that she has a, she's certified with respect to dogs in particular. The ordinance doesn't state that that's a requirement, and I can see why she would proceed without a specific approval or certification for dogs, but I think it would meet the intent of the ordinance if you were to condition the issuance of a certificate of occupancy upon her showing compliance with a provision, as you now interpret it to include, to include only certification for canines. I think that would be very unreasonable.
We weren't, Mr. Lowry, from my perspective, I wasn't looking for a certificate related to canine specifically, because the state of Maine does not give one, but the state of Maine does give an animal trainer certificate, and, and that was my question, does she have a certificate of animal trainer, which is what the ordinance calls for, which is what Kristen wrote in the ordinance? This was not our ordinance.
Yes, but it does say that, animal trainer, it doesn't say dog trainer.
That, that is correct, but she does not have anything that indicates that she's an animal trainer.
A horse is an animal.
None of these, none of these certificates indicate that you're an animal trainer. You're a riding instructor, you're a riding master, and you're a camp instructor, none of those indicate training.
But it does, excuse me.
Why is it that it was accepted on the first application that I did? And now it's not?
I don't, I don't recall having accepted it at all before.
The first application that I did that you deemed complete, and in the same meeting denied it.
Kristen, determining an application being complete simply means that we have all of the information we need with which to make a decision, it does not mean that we have accepted all of the information favorably to the applicant. It simply means we have what we need to make a decision, one way or the other. Now, I, I for one, if, if the rest of the planning board thinks that it's appropriate, I'm willing to allow her to get a certified animal trainer certificate as a condition before she can get her permit to open up, so that we don't have to go through this process a fourth time.
That's reasonable. Do you need a motion for that?
I think we would need a motion to accept the application with the condition that a certificate of animal trainer is provided, at which point she would be able to get a certificate of occupancy from the codes enforcement officer.
Before I make that motion, are there any other outstanding things that need to be made?
I don't know if there's anything the rest of the board has. Roger?
Oh, I'm good.
Marty?
Yeah.
Susan?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions right now.
Jens?
None, Rich.
Okay, thank you. Tom, make your motion.
Let me, let me make the motion that we accept that we deem the application complete with the condition that she supplies a certificate of animal training.
Yeah, just, just, just a point of order, Tom, this is not to determine the application complete, this is to grant the permit, contingent upon her providing the animal training certificate.
Well, and the completion of all the improvements as well, is that right, Rich?
Well, yes.
To complete all the improvements is not...
Where do we stand on that, Ted?
Yes, I know. Well, if you look in your bag, you have the findings, you have the findings of fact, they're written for approval, I don't know if you want to do what you did last time, we don't have to read every, all of it, and just, but you have those findings of fact, and what you could do is the next, what you did last time, essentially read the motion, and then with the conditions, and then add that condition to that motion.
I think that would be wonderful, but I do not have the findings of fact. Any of the other planning board members have the findings of fact?
I think I do.
I don't.
I think I do, yeah, I do.
Do you? Okay.
Rich?
Hang on, Marty, yeah? Marty?
Yes. Only question that, only question I have on this condition of, or overall, if she's met everything else, so that we do not have to reject this, is there any way we can go forward, so that she doesn't get a rejection?
That's, that's what Tom's motion would do for us.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna ask Jens to read the findings of fact, and then to include at the end that she needs to get the certificate of animal training as part of that condition.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Do you want to read the whole findings of fact, it's four pages long.
Oof. No, I think if we can get the, what the conditions were.
Therefore be a resolve, that portion, the bottom?
Yes, at the very end.
But I'm gonna need a motion that the findings of fact are acceptable, and that you're only for the purposes of this approval would be to read the, therefore, or the motion to approve subject to the following conditions.
I'd like you to read, Ted, the performance standards for daycare, for pet daycare facilities.
Okay. So, you want the whole?
You don't have to read the rest of it, but I do want you to read that.
So, you would like me to read this?
Or Jens, or anyone is fine.
Rich, excuse me, Ted, I'm still writing the addendum that Rich asked for at the end of the reading of the findings of fact, so if you want to address the, the performance standards as Susan requested, go ahead.
Okay. Well, the findings of fact are that the owner of the property is Kristen and Hildegarde Woodward, the property is located at 496 Limerick Road, Tax Map 27, Lot 2, in the R1 District. The property currently contains a resident detached garage, a horse stable, and adjoining fields and woods. The applicant proposes to develop a dog daycare facility serving 10 canines in a detached garage located east of the residence. The proposed facility is located with a detached garage that is partially conditioned consisting of 222 square foot kennel room with 10 individual transport cages, and attached 184 foot garage bay. Designed as an indoor group play area and an outdoor 5900 square foot group play area enclosed with a eight-foot high fence. The applicant proposes to install semi-opaque screening on all portions of the outdoor fencing facing adjacent residences and living areas to both screen the pens from said residences and to discourage exciting kennel dogs. The outdoor play area will provide approximately 590 square feet per canine, while the indoor space will provide 18 square feet per canine, assuming all dogs are used in this space at one time. The outdoor exercise play area meets all setback requirements of L U O, Land Use Ordinance Section 93332A. Indoor kennel space is proposed to contain a double, double gated entry with top latches to prevent canines from escaping the facility upon egressing or ingressing the main entrance. The rate when not in indoor or outdoor play areas, dogs are supposed to be housed in individual cages, because complement of cages is proposed to be six extra large cages measuring four feet by two, by two foot six, by two foot eight inch serving large dogs, two cages measuring three feet by five inches by two, two feet by four inches by two feet by seven inches height, serving medium sized dog, and two cages measuring three feet by one foot, three foot one by two feet width cages serving medium to small sized dogs. Cages can have, will have a pan on the bottom. The floor of the kennel consists of wood substrates, the opaque class, plastic dividers are proposed to be placed between the adjacent cages to provide privacy and reduce any aggression. Number nine, the kennel area and the indoor exercise area will be heated and cooled by two proposed heat pumps to be installed prior to operation. Ten, water supplies to be either carried from the main house to the kennel building or be supplied by garden hose. Eleven, access to the outdoor play area shall be from a single door at the rear of the kennel, kennel room. Twelve, acclimation pen is proposed to be located off the main outdoor exercise area to acclimatize new dogs to the facility and sequester timid canines. Thirteen, the applicant proposes to provide six parking spaces in the existing parking lot on the property, serve clients in one handicap space located in front of the garage designated and striped as a ADA parking space. Fourteen, the applicant proposes to eliminate the parking area and kennel floor entrance with two roll mounted K E, 250 metal hell eye shoebox type fixtures mounted at no greater height than 20 feet over the main facility entrance in the corner of the main house. Plans for the proposed lighting are documented by submissions from Camille's Electric LLC at Bedford Bank and dated June 27, 2018. The applicant submitted a document... The applicant submitted a document from Casella Waste dated April 9th, 2020 indicating willingness to contract with the property owner for trash removal and for, uh, excuse me, for feces removal. Letter intent does, uh, is in, does provide an alternate, uh, strategy for disposing of canine feces. Sixteen, the applicant has submitted some very certification that she is a certified animal trainer in accordance with L U O nine, three, thirty-three, three D. The Arundel Fire Department has certified the facility is in compliance with land use ordinance section 5.7, provided two fire extinguishers are provided in the kennel area. Eighteen, the Arundel Public Works Department has determined the driveway entrance in, on Two Limerick Road is sufficient to accommodate ingressing and egressing traffic to the proposed facility. Plan documentation of the applicant's proposed improvements include parking plan prepared by John W. Einzettler R A and dated four, eighteen, eighteen. Lighting plan specifications prepared by Camille's Electric LLC and dated June 27th, 2018. Interior architectural drawing layouts as well as dimensional plan of the outdoor exercise were prepared by the applicant. Conformance with conditional use criteria to do review and consideration, the planning board has determined the application to be in conformance with criteria section nine, two, nine of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows, nine, two, nine, one. At the uses compatible with and similar to the general care categories of uses of neighboring properties, pet daycare facilities are conditional uses in the R1 district and the uses consistent scale and use with other uses in the surrounding neighborhood in the district. So we vote, gentlemen and ladies?
Somebody make a motion.
For nine, two, one. Nine, two, nine, one.
We need a motion for nine, two, nine, one?
Take motion that's read.
Ted, could you read all that, please?
Yeah, I'm just kidding.
Okay, nine, two, nine, one. I was doing too much, uh.
Who made the motion?
Roger.
Roger made the motion. Tom seconded?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on nine, two, nine, one? All those in favor?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Did somebody want me to reread that?
No.
No, that was a joke.
Tom was yanking your chain.
Thank you, Tom.
Jens, your volume is not up.
You're right now. How's that?
Okay, all those in favor? Wait, wait, say aye.
Aye. Aye, please.
Okay. Any opposed? It is unanimous. On to nine, two, nine, two.
Uses consistent with the comprehensive plan and anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that comprehensive plan does not specifically address the introduction of pet daycare facilities in the residential districts. Kennels are in fact rated from the district. However, the town meeting has approved the use of the R1 district and given specific performance standards. Nine, two, nine, two. Need a motion.
Somebody make a motion.
Are you going to read the performance standards or aren't we there yet?
Already did.
He did.
I went down through the list.
But I didn't see, there was one performance standard that's in the state performance standard that I didn't see, uh, I didn't hear read, and that was about sufficient accommodation to, um, separate and prevent, uh, conflict within the boarding facility. To prevent interspecies conflict accommodations. And so that they can be physically separated at all times. Is that not a part of this performance?
Yes, it is. And that, uh, that particular use, I think, um, the applicant showed you in her, uh, in the photo documentation we did back in, in April 23rd. I believe I showed that there was a, a sequestered area on the stairwell that was specifically isolated from the rest of the, uh, the dogs that would be used, uh, for any dogs that were, uh, hostile or aggressive and needed to be, uh, sequestered until such time that the applicants, or the client.
So that was in nine, two, nine, one, or nine, two, nine, two?
Well, no, no, it isn't. Uh, that is in, um, nine, the nine twos go through the, the nine, the specific conditions that you have to achieve for, uh, receiving a conditional use permit. In terms of the actual uses, uh, the actual conditions of a, um, pet daycare center. Let's see. That's a different matter. That's going down all of the, uh, well, if you want me to read those, that's a different game.
And that's the specific one that I'm looking for, but I didn't hear you read that in nine, two, nine, one. And you said something about performance standards in nine, two, nine, two.
Yeah.
And, you know, so one of them is ancillary services are permitted, uh, like grooming, animal training classes, et cetera. No overnight accommodations. Species shall be limited to dogs, cats and other domesticated pets, but no exotic species. Facilities catering to, uh, dog daycare must have one full-time staff member who is a certified animal trainer. Uh, to prevent interspecies conflict, um, sufficient accommodation has to be made to physically separate the animals at all times. A minimum staff, uh, to dog ratio of one to 12 shall be maintained. Obviously she is doing that. And then it goes on through P H I J K L M N O P Q and R.
Right, but those are, those are not part of the conditional use ordinance. Conditional uses are in nine, two, one through nine, two, seven, I believe.
Nine, two, nine, through one, through nine, two, nine, seven.
What, what you've said are specific to the, uh, the dog daycare. Those are part of the ordinance. And tho- those would have to be met under any circumstance. That's not something that we would be taking an individual vote on.
Okay.
Is that something the plant, is that, I, I apologize, Susan. I thought that, that you were talking about, uh, the findings of fact and the, uh, nine, two, nine section. I didn't realize you were talking about the specific performance standards for pet daycares. Those are nine, three, thirty-three.
Let's wait till we get close to this.
So what would you, uh, you, shall we go through the performance standards for pet daycare centers to make sure this is, meets those standards?
Personally, I don't think we need to. Those are the standards. And if she, if she violates the standards, her permit could be revoked.
Or negatively voted on at the outset.
Or negatively voted upon at the outset. Absolutely correct.
Okay.
So, um.
So back to nine, two, two.
Well, I guess the question is, is there, uh, is there anything in, in, in those performance standards you believe the applicant, besides the certificate the applicant has not provided in this application?
Yes.
Which, which one would you, which one?
The one we've been discussing. I don't think that adequate accommodation has been made in order to separate, uh, dogs in the event of conflict.
That is, let's see.
It's letter E in the states, in the state performance standards.
In the state, in our performance standards, you mean?
I, I think these are, um, oh, yes, our performance standards.
That's inters-
Nine, three, three, three.
Yeah, nine, three, three, three. Uh, section is interspecies conflict in, in, in cases where there's dogs and cats or dogs and boa constrictors and stuff.
But there is one ordinance also to deal with, um,
Aggressive dogs.
Species intraspecies conflict.
Yeah.
So. Anyway.
Well, let, I'm, I'm just looking for that here. Um.
I don't think adequate accommodation has been made in order to prevent, uh, intraspecies conflict. I don't think there's. I think it's too tight. But again, I'm only one person.
Do you want me to proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Uh, all right. So then we're down to, uh, we still don't have, I still have a, uh, motion second on.
We had, we had to vote on nine, two, one. Now we need, we need a motion on nine, two, two.
Whether or not this-
Rich?
Yeah, Marty?
Before we make that, can that, if that is not adequate at the time, could that be made as a conditional use of, uh, like with the license?
We could, we could make it a condition of the permit, but we would have to go back and look at it and define what it is that we're looking at in terms of, of the conflict that Susan is addressing.
Right, it's kind of nebulous, Marty. So it's subjective. You know, what I may think is inadequate, Kristen may think is adequate. You know? But we would vote on that on nine, three, three, three. Is that correct?
We would vote on that when we get done and we vote on the entire permit. Once we get through these conditions.
Well, I'm willing to wait.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So we still need a motion on nine, two, nine, two, two.
You want me to reread that?
No.
Hang on.
I don't need you to reread it, but you can if you want to.
No, I think Jens wanted to say something.
Oh, we've lost his.
He's lost, he's lost his audio?
Yeah. Richie, uh, can you text him? Okay, oh, he's talking. Richie's talking on the telephone.
Yeah, but he's not muted.
But he's trying to get through to you on the telephone. You're the, you're the host, so it comes from you. Hey, this is going to just require a little bit of.
Hang on, hang on.
Sorry. Call Jens Bergen.
Tommy.
Calling Jens Bergen, mobile.
This is all the way.
Interesting.
And.
Yes, hi Jens.
I can hear you guys fine. You can't hear me, though.
No.
Not at all.
All the way.
Okay, how do we handle this?
Through the phone and hope my, I, I have unlimited minutes, thank goodness.
Okay.
Okay, and let me make sure I'm on major volume so everybody can hear you. Okay, that, that's the best I've got. So, all right. Okay, good. Can everybody hear Jens?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion for nine, two, nine, two.
That was my motion, right?
That was your motion. Jens made the motion. We need a second, Mr. Chairman. Sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Jens' motion, Tom seconds. Is there any discussion on nine, two, two? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Nine, two, three, Ted?
Nine, two, three. Nine, two, three is that there's adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to it and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The proposed parking layout meets the minimum requirements for pet daycare specified in land use ordinance section five, twelve, four. Public Works Department has approved the driveway entrance into the Limerick Road.
Reverb.
Yeah, we got it.
There is, there is adequate.
I think you have to turn down the volume. Yeah.
Yeah, I just did. Okay, we have, all right, so that's, uh, that was nine, two, three, nine, two, nine, three. Did we have a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Not yet.
Motion that we accept as read?
Yep, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roger motion, Susan seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Nine, two, nine, four, please.
Nine, two, nine, four, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. There's no direct water supply provided to propose, propose facility meet sanitation or animal hydration needs. All water will be carried in by hand and delivered to the facility by garden hose. Water will water supply and toilet facilities located in the adjacent main house in compliant with land use section nine, three, thirty-three, three, R. The applicant has proposed a plan for canine feces to be picked up by Casella Waste in compliance with land use section, uh, land use ordinance section nine, three, thirty-three, three, oh.
Is there a motion? Somebody, anybody?
Well. I, I have a question on that. Was the, um, question on whether the Casella contract was the animal feces or not? Um, was that clarified?
The new contract received, uh, last, uh, last month. Stayed at April's ninth.
Okay. Okay. So we still need a motion.
Jens, did you say you're gonna, motion?
Uh, I had a question and I'm sorry, it's involved to Tom's, uh, question, but it was cut off for me. So there is, uh, provisions for pickup of the, of animal feces, is that right? By Casella? Okay, and that's a new development, right Ted?
Yes.
Is it what they declined, so before, at least they made a proviso that whatever the arrangements were with Kristen, it didn't include picking up.
This one did.
And this one does?
Yes.
And Tom has made a motion?
Nope.
No, not yet.
And I'll make a motion.
Motion has been made for nine, two, nine. Are we on three or four, Ted? Four?
We're on four.
Nine, two, nine, four. Is there a second?
No second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Motion by Jens, second by Roger. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I, I'm, I'm opposed to just most because of the, uh, the bathroom issue.
Okay, thank you. Five, four, one opposed. Onto nine, two, nine, five.
Five, okay. There, there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties in that there is the potential for noise, noise nuisances from barking dogs. The applicant has a plan for remedying excessive parking. The applicant proposes exterior lighting that meets land use, uh, ordinance section five, ten.
So Ted, um, point of order, do we, we don't, Kristen obviously doesn't know exactly how she's going to handle barking doors, barking dogs or the noise factor. But do we have any parameters, uh, about how that's supposed to be handled? Like how, how long the dogs are allowed to be barking and, you know, when does it have to be addressed and, you know, how is it supposed to be addressed? Is there, are there any specifics? It just says it's going to be dealt with?
Uh, no, what, the specifics are excessive barking by dogs at a permanent daycare operation will be grounds for revocation of conditional use permit after noise, after notice and a hearing. Acceptance of barking shall be defined as continuous barking for more than 30 minutes at a time for more than two days.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. There, there is, there was one letter that was submitted to the board. By Mr. Sawyer. Where is, is Mr. Sawyer's property on the other side of Limerick Road?
Yes, directly across the street.
Mr. Sawyer's still on the, you could ask him if you want to. Mr. Sawyer, are you there?
I am here.
Where are you located in relationship to the property?
Directly across the street.
Thank you.
Question.
Yeah Marty.
Distance from the, I, where the dog pound, pound is to the road is quite a bit of distance, more than we'll say, and I'm not, don't know how much, a hundred, two hundred feet, I mean.
About two hundred feet.
You get to the road and he's on the other side of the road.
So he's probably two hundred and fifty plus feet away.
Thank you.
I was looking at the, I was actually, that's what I was looking at, it looks to me like about between the, the structures. It's like it would be three and four hundred feet away.
Might be, I don't have that right in front of me right now.
Okay.
Tangible.
Have we ever heard from any other neighbors?
No.
Much closer, though?
No.
I don't, I don't think there are any that are closer.
Yeah, I think that's a negative.
There are? Some.
The blanks.
Well, we notified the abutters, right?
Yes.
So. One responded, if no one else responds, that's not, you know, run two's run problem. We're not here to, I mean, if, if, we only have one objection.
Okay.
Agreed.
We're gonna, gonna move, moving on, the motion has been made and seconded.
By who? Nobody's made it seconded again.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion.
Jens. Need a second.
Jens is making the motion, we need a second.
I'll second.
Motion by Jens, seconded by Roger. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? It is unanimous.
Yeah. I, I oppose, I just, cause noise issues.
Okay, again, five to one.
Okay, then we're going to nine two nine six, that the physical characteristics of the site including location, slope, soils, drainage, vegetation cover are suitable for the proposed use. The proposed use will not measurably change the existing topography, slopes, soils, or vegetative cover of the site.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. I do have a question for the applicant.
Yes.
According to nine three 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 two, space and bulk requirements, how far is it from your house to the dog daycare?
I'm sure I've measured it, it's about twenty feet. Twenty or thirty feet, somewhere in there. From my house to the garage?
Yes. Yeah.
I can go measure it right now if you want.
No, that's.
I'd say it's about thirty feet.
Okay. Ted, is that a conflict? Because the ordinance says that the minimum setback from an adjacent residential structure is one hundred feet.
I think the owner would be part of.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking. The owner is exempted on this one.
Correct.
Yeah, shouldn't. Okay, then I'm happy.
Also Rich. That it is attached.
No, the garage isn't attached to the house.
No.
It's a separate building Marty.
Oh, I'm sorry then.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an issue that, that she was not the hundred feet back. And if, if that's not a problem, that's cool. Okay. Motion has been made and seconded, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
Nine two nine seven. The use will not constitute a public or private nuisance, no additional nuisances will be generated by the proposed use.
Is there a motion, or is there a second? No, is there a motion?
I will make the motion.
Jens.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Jens, seconded by Susan, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
Nine two nine eight, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards are met. The applicant has substantially met all the performance standards of L U O, section nine three thirty three, and all other pertinent sections of the land use ordinance.
Okay, that brings us to the certificate, doesn't it?
No.
Yeah.
We need a motion first, in order to discuss it, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, okay, up for discussion. And, and you're right Jens, this does bring us to that, where did Jens go?
He's, he's here. Jens, he's still there, I.
Well, no, he was in the lower left-hand corner and now he's up in.
He got promoted.
Yeah, somebody left and it reshuffled my screen. Okay, so your point Jens?
This is where we are, to deal with a whether the certificates advanced by Kristen meets a clearly defined requirement.
Correct.
The ordinance, and I say clearly defined, I'm not sure is clearly defined. But I think we gotta, we gotta look at this.
And, and I agree, I thi, I think that she needs to get a, a certified animal trainer certificate from the state of Maine.
Okay, so my question is, is there, is there something that the state of Maine actually issues that? Or is that just something that, you know, you get somewhere else and you present it to the state and somebody decides where that cuts most of them off?
Well, there are certifying agencies Jens, like the A P D T, which is what the capable canine, she had a number of certifications. Normally, the state does accept those certifications as a legitimate training certificate. So, you know, I think the A K C has one, the A P D T has one, I don't know what horse training has in the way of certifications, but I know as far as dogs are concerned, those are two very prominent, well-respected organizations that most people running dog facilities or doing dog training are associated with.
Okay, but it sounds like those are, those are private entities, they're not governmental entities, in particular the state of Maine.
But I, I don't know if Maine has a certification program, but a lot of states like New Hampshire and New York will accept the certifications from the A K C and from A P D T as sufficient proof of someone's abilities.
Alright, so, I mean, how are we gonna know that tonight?
I don't think we are.
These are adequate, because you know, I, I don't think these are, I don't think these are meaningless, but.
Through the chair?
Yes Ted.
If I may, it, it, the, it, the requirement says facilities catering to a dog care must have one full-time staff member who is a certified animal trainer, it doesn't say who issues it, or it certainly doesn't mention anything about the state of Maine on it, and I don't think the state of Maine has a certified animal trainer. Certificate, frankly speaking. I'm just kinda looking through the, the website and I don't see anything popping up on state Maine. So it would be, as Susan said, from a recognized organization or whatever the planning board finds suitable to meet this, this criteria of a certified animal trainer.
But the state has a certificate to, for a kennel facility or daycare facility, that has to be licensed.
It does, she probably received a, a provisional one. She's already received a provisional license and she, she needs to get her final license after she makes all the improvements of leave.
Right, so, but she doesn't have a certificate, a training, that she's a certified, qualified, whatever, she may be qualified, but she doesn't have that piece of paper.
And that was my question about whether or not we're willing to accept the three certificates that she has related to being a riding instructor or a riding master or a camp instructor.
I am not. So.
I don't know much about this, this entity that issued these certificates, other than the name at the top of these certificates, it looks like this is an equestrian school somewhere in West Virginia, it's been around for almost sixty years. I mean, this doesn't look like a fly-by-night entity or organization to me. At least what's on the quickly available on the, on the net.
I, I wonder, I, I agree, they look reputable, but I wonder if they, they issue something that has to do with training rather than camping or, or riding.
If I can get that, would that be acceptable?
I would say if, if you had something that had something to do with training on the certificate, that would work for me.
Yes.
Well, I'm only speaking for myself.
No, I, I agree Tom.
We can make that a condition of occupancy.
We can, and I thought that that's what, where we would end up putting it, well, you know how normally we go through all of this section and then we say subject to doing this, 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 and this?
Yes.
I thought that was, would be the spot that we could put that in.
Well, I think it should come from a legitimate certifying organization or you know, it sounds like, I don't see the certificate, I, I have to open my email, but um you know. Is that the riding school where you taught or the day camp where you taught Kristen?
That was the school that I learned all that from.
Right, but did you, is, did you teach there or you just, that was the school that you went to to learn how to teach?
No, that was part of the program, we, we did have to teach. And we had.
When you were a counselor and getting your education, it was from the place that you were, that certified you, but did you go elsewhere and teach as well?
After I got out of school.
So, as, as long as it's a legitimate certifying agency or organization, I'm fine with that. But I think Roger's right, it should be a condition of the permit, that we get, we have that and it's acceptable.
So now we, I agree, but we have a dilemma where, where we have to approve of this particular clause in order to make a condition to follow. So how, how can we get there if we aren't ready to pass this specific one?
It, it is problematic because if you fail any one of these conditions, your permit fails.
Right, and I don't wanna, I, I propose we table this rather than fail it, which I don't know if, I believe that would require starting all over again. Could we just table this until we get some evidence of training and then we can just revisit this, this very last requirement?
That would be up to the applicant. I mean, we, we can table it, Kristen, we can table this, you can get us the information that shows that you, that you are an animal trainer and we could proceed forward and pick it, pick it back up in two weeks. If we vote on this, the way the ordinance is laid out as a conditional use you would end up failing, because you haven't shown that you're a certified trainer. Can you get something from the school?
Well, I will certainly try, yes.
Cause that would be a lot easier than, than failing you and then you have to go through and do this whole thing all over again, I don't wanna do that.
I don't either.
You know, I was, I, I was going to add this as a conditional use at the very end. I hadn't thought about the condition use permit here, because normally at the end of at the very end of the permit, we list out and it says you have to do this or you have to do that or you have to do this other thing before we will grant you the permit, and I was thinking that that would be the appropriate spot to put this. I had, I had not thought about this last section in nine, at nine two nine.
Through the chair?
Yes.
You can amend the way this is worded in nine two nine, if you also want, it's, it's up to the board. But it says that all of the requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards are met with the exception of the provision of a training certificate. A train, a certificate as an animal trainer being provided before a C O is provided, is granted.
I'm, I'm not sure that we can amend that because that's the ordinance and I don't think we can change that ordinance for, for this particular event, that's why I thought we would add it at the very end. But I, I think we should, if Kristen can get us this, this paperwork by next, within the next week we can get you back, we'll, we'll put you on the agenda for two weeks from now so that we can just read through this whole thing again and vote on it.
But is that gonna be the only thing?
Is there anything else that, that the members of the board have a problem with?
We already voted and approved of all the other conditions, so this is the la, this is the last one. So I don't know, I haven't heard anything else getting in the way.
Jens?
Have you finished with the findings of fact Ted?
No.
No, there's, there's more to the findings of fact.
Thought this was the last one.
So this is the last of the conditional uses.
This is the last of the performance, yeah. The only thing that's left is the reading of the resolution, whether you approve or deny this application or what the conditions are met, are, are required under that. And Jens, you had something to say that you got running?
I, I'm not really comfortable with this process that she's being shepherded into. I don't think it's fair, cause I don't think it's exceedingly clear what's called for here. She's presented something in good faith that looks to me satisfies the vague requirements that are in the ordinance as to a certified animal trainer, I mean, the state doesn't issue those certificates, I don't think. You, you get them some, from some private entity, she's provided something that's from a, a long time ago, I mean, these things were issued to her a long time ago.
Thirty-three years.
Nineteen seventy-seven.
And, you know, to prove the issuance to me of like a Z card for my merchant marine, I couldn't do that. You know, I don't think fair to her, and I think, I think asking her to do.
Jens? So, you know, then there's the question of equal justice, I mean, we put the capable canine through, we made that woman jump through so many hoops to, you know, and every time she had a hitch in her application, we sent her back for things as minor as sign sizes. And she came back and she had all of her ducks in a row, not that Kristen doesn't necessarily and, but at every turn, we're trying to, I mean, and I agree, we should be somewhat flexible, but, I mean the ordinance got completely rewritten, we, the town voted on it, they accepted the conditions that she rewrote. conditions that she rewrote to be specific to her her facility and, you know, and now it is the the blanket ordinance for anybody else who wants to have a doggy daycare. So we accommodated that, I guess, because we had to and the town wanted it. Okay, so, you know, Velma's here, Roger's here. There's a whole bunch of people who are notable from the town and everybody wants to make it work for Kristen. But what about all people like the capable canine and other applicants that come before us that we twist them into pretzels, get them to do what we want them to do, conform to what the ordinances say, and then vote accordingly on it?
Well, I disagree with your I disagree with your with your outline insofar as we put the capable canine through any kind of unreasonable process.
No, I didn't say it was unreasonable. I just said we we were very specific about what we wanted from her. And she came back multiple times and she was, you know, she got until she got it right and had all of her ducks in a row, we didn't vote on it.
He did have her ducks in a row.
Right. I'm saying she ultimately did.
Susan, let Jens speak.
Sorry, Jens.
These were two different situations completely. I mean, I think that capable canine was highly organized when she came in and to my view, she breezed right through the process. She was before us several times, for sure, but a lot of it was just to seek the guidance of the planning board along the way. So this is a this has been a more arduous journey for Kristen and I I think she's given us what she can. And I think, to my view, you know, it could have been better. It could have been, you know, directed to dogs. It's not, but if the ordinance doesn't call for that, so.
To the chair?
Yeah, Marty.
The fact is also there's two differences between them. One was not just a daycare. The other one was also a a training establishment.
To be sure, to be sure.
Thank you, Marty.
Then why does she need a training certificate?
Exactly.
She Susan, she needed the training certificate because she wrote the ordinance and that's what it calls for.
Oh, well, there you go. Because if it's just a doggy daycare and she's not training, why would she need a training certificate?
I I just throw it out there. I'm not comfortable with with that, those certificates being sufficient. It might as well, to me, just say it's it's a goldfish feeding person that or an aquarium cleaner. It's it's a different species, but we don't say anything about that, but it doesn't we the requirement is for a training certificate. And I don't see training in there.
Well, I think that's a failure of the ordinance.
But we didn't. We have to go by the ordinance. That's all we have. We we're not making this up. This is this is black and white to me.
Okay. Oh, this is a speaking of animals, this is probably equus mortis at this point.
I'm sorry, Jens. I didn't hear what you said.
The dead horse.
A dead horse. Okay. Okay.
Well, someone can make a mo.
We need we need a motion and a second so that we can vote on it.
I'll make a motion.
Nine two nine.
You moving that for a vote, Jens?
Yes, the motion has actually met all the performance standards of the L U O and nine point eight point three three and all the pertinent sections of the land use ordinance. I so moved.
We have that motion's out of order. We haven't voted on nine two nine two or nine two nine nine, rather, the last one. That's what brought this whole issue up. Does she meet all of those conditional use criteria?
To the chair?
Hang on just for a minute, Marty.
Before we make a motion?
Yeah. What do you want, Marty?
Does Kristen want to get the certificate so that we don't have to play the question game? Her answer.
Good question, Marty.
Well, obviously, I'd like you to take what I have, but if you're not going to do that, I will get in touch with the school and see if they can provide me with something that has the word training in it.
That would help.
But I just want to know that if I do that, if that's going to be the end of it.
That's a losersy. And help. She even makes it if she doesn't.
Oh, it to me, that would work. Actually, I'll put it that way. If if was some type of document or a certificate that's included some type of training. Because right now, those certificates look like you were trained to how to ride. It doesn't say that you trained.
I understand the wording. The wording does not say training. It is it will basically written up for people who knew horse language, that that type of thing. So yes, the the actual word training is not in there, but that is what those mean. The riding master is you learn all aspects of horses.
So Jens, I'm on the website for Meredith Manor in Virginia, which is the same place that the certificate comes from. And they have, you know, a bunch of general classes and then they have certifications. And it says training certification, teaching certification, equine massage therapy certification and other working certifications. These are all the certifications that they offer.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the problem is that she her certificates were issued you know, half a almost half a century ago.
Right, I know.
I mean.
But can I just say one thing? It's it we're we're not requiring the applicant to have a doggy daycare center. It's someone who should, I assume, has a passion for animals and wants to be around the animals. And to me, it's not all that much to ask to to show evidence. I think that's why we have is someone who knows how to deal with the animals. And and if it was something from thirty-five years ago, it's pretty vague. But if you really have the passion to have a business, to have ten dogs that you'll be there with all day long, it's not asking all that much to go and and get go through the training, take the exam or whatever it takes to have that. It's like if you're a hairdresser, you have to go through a lot more than this or any any profession. I don't think it's a.
If 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 Kristen is Kristen is comfortable taking the invitation that's been made to her, then God bless her. Go ahead. We should move on then.
Well, obviously, I would prefer that you accept what I gave you, but you're obviously not going to. So I'm going to have to come up with something else.
And then then you're okay with our tabling this to the next meeting?
Uh, yes, I'm just, what happens if it takes me longer than a week to get it?
We have we have thirty days in which to make a decision on on this particular application.
Okay.
And we have the option of extensions as.
No, we don't have the option. Kristen can ask us for an extension.
You can ask for an extension.
Okay.
But within third with one, if if not at the next meeting, then at the first meeting in June, we will have to address this issue.
Okay.
Okay?
But once I provide that, that will be the end of it.
As far as as far as I'm concerned, that and that's a we can ask the rest of the board. I'll I'll poll them before we get done with this. But as far as I'm concerned, if you can show me a a certificate that says you're a trainer, I'll be fine with that.
Okay.
Ted has to finish reading the rest of the findings of fact. I mean, right? So there anyway.
What what else do we have to read, Ted?
The motion, which is irrelevant until you until you make a decision on nine two nine eight.
Okay, but there's nothing after nine two nine eight other than the motion itself, correct?
For approval of the conditions of that. That's it. We're right near the end.
Okay.
So thus far, if we pick it up, the planning board, we we won't. I would recommend that we not return and go over all of this again because the board has already voted on all seven preceding conditional use classifications that she has met those classifications and those requirements. So
I agree.
Nine two nine eight is the only one left. So if we just table it here, then we would pick it up there at such such time that Kristen provides a training certificate sufficient to meet the board's needs and desires.
Yeah.
Tom, anything else?
No, I I I will say that if if once you have that document, I'm a hundred percent behind it. I'd I'd be ready to approve completely.
Roger?
Yeah, I'm in favor of that.
Marty?
Yay.
Okay, if you could get that, Kristen.
Okay.
We'll we'll put you on for the next meeting. If you can't get it, let us know in advance and we'll move it down to the to the first meeting in June.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair?
Yes.
For procedural purposes, I think I would like a motion to table this application until the next meeting.
Thank you. Good point.
I'll I'll make that motion that we would quick turn to table.
I'll second that.
Let me also add that we'll pick right up at this condition for all the other findings of facts, just this last remaining one.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to table the applicant until the next meeting. Any other any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It appears to be unanimous. Moving on.
Thank you.
I see that Rick has joined us. Let me take him off mute. Well, he put himself on mute. I don't think I can take him off. There you go. Okay. Bentley Warren, conditional use permit registration of an existing contractor yard. Request to register of forty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-four square foot, one point one three acre gravel area containing ten construction vehicles as a legally existing contractor yard to use on a twenty-four point two acre parcel tax map, ten lot two A, located at three forty-five Old Post Road in the R two district. Bentley Warren is the owner and applicant, and I'm assuming that Rick Light is his agent.
Turn that line off. Yes, to the chair, yes, I am. And Andy Kaski is the site contractor with Bentley. He's here on voice, I believe, Andy, to.
He is there.
I think I am here, Rick.
Yep. And I want to let you know Albert Frick was going to be on the call tonight, but just before the the meeting started, his wife had a medical issue and he was not able to be here, but he was going to be here and send our condolences to Al. And Bentley is also in transit traveling and otherwise would be on the line as well, but I don't think he has access to internet where he's at. So we'll take it. Yeah. Hopefully, Andy and I can answer your questions.
Well, I my my first question would be what what makes you think that he was ever a contractor yard two? There's no indication that he ever had a contract yard out there.
Now, the the ordinance is was we understand the ordinance. I guess this is a new process for all of us. The or through the chair, the ordinance states that, as we understand, this is a registration of any contractor yard in the town. And under the under the section nineteen, there was maybe for a second second here, under the nine three fourteen D, we would qualify this. This would qualify having more than four trucks as a contractor two yard, correct? And the fact that it hasn't been licensed, it predates the ordinance. He's had the he has had this as a contractor yard before the ordinance ever existed.
No, sir, he has not.
For thirty-five years, he's been doing he's had a contractor yard. So this is a we look at this, as I understand the process, I'm sort of we're sort of looking for answers from board too on the process here, is this would be a legally nonconforming use in the R two district because it predated the the current ordinance for the contractor yard registration. And the purpose, as I understand, the purpose of this is to bring contractor yards into compliance with current standards. And are we incorrect in that?
You are correct that the purpose of 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 part of the ordinance was to bring existing contractor yards into compliance with the ordinance. Bentley's contract the yard didn't exist. We have we have any number of documents that indicate that all of this was for personal use. The permits for buildings that were out there, the permits that were for his private museum were all listed as being personal use. The when we did the sidewalks, when he planned on expanding out his campground, it was all personal use and he was simply storing his equipment at that spot because it was easier to do from there than it was to constantly have to move equipment back and forth. And we allowed that. We we did not ever discuss a contractor yard two with him.
What is the difference? Maybe then that would beg the question of whether this needs to be registered at all. I mean, our understanding was that he because of the use is a contractor yard isn't necessarily for commercial use. He's using it with the intent of having vehicles, construction vehicles and and whatnot as defined under the ordinance on his property that would come under the under the definition of a contractor two yard. The fact that it's not a it's not a specific business with a name on it isn't I I don't see how that has anything to do with the registration of the contract. It's a use. So if if we're saying his use has his use is is having trucks and vehicles stored on his property. If we're saying that doesn't need any sort of registration or it's it's in compliance with the ordinance, we're I mean, it's sort of a catch twenty-two. We're trying to come clean and and follow the ordinance. And we're and you're saying because it's not a it's not a for-profit operation, so to speak, it's a separate business. We don't have to register?
No, I'm saying that if he wants to have a contractor yard two out there, he can do so, but this but to say that it is an existing contractor yard two is not the case. It was not an existing contractor yard two. He would have to go through the entire application process.
I guess I'm confused. The the ordinance, the preamble of the ordinance talks about registering contractor yards and operations shall at all existing nonconforming contracting operations as described in section nine three fourteen two shall register as an existing operation with the planning board by August first, et cetera, two thousand sixteen. Any existing nonconforming contractor yard that fails to register as existing operations by that date, et cetera, shall be deemed a nonconforming use, which will not expand in scope, et cetera. That, to me, says that the use of the property, having trucks and vehicles for for construction use that in related uses would require to be registered as a contractor yard, not the fact that he's not selling material, that he's not selling loam or whatnot. I don't see where that comes under the definition of a contractor yard.
I think the question is personal use, isn't it?
Yes.
Personal use.
So that's that's what everybody I think that's where the the disconnect is. Is this all for his personal use? Is that why he wants to label it officially a contractor two yard? I mean, why if it's if it's only for his personal use, would he have to get a contractor two yard permit, Rich?
I I guess that's the that's the question to ask the the planner or code officer. But the second thing is that you use the equipment on the adjacent property, the campground property, as you know. Andy is Andy, if you're still here. The the equipment is being used across the it's on his property, but it's on a commercial lot, the the campground lot. And he stores the equipment there at night and 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 takes the equipment back and forth. It's all property. It's all property of Bentley Warren's, but they're separate properties and separate entities, as we discussed, you know, with the campground permit. So if that is something that triggers a contractor yard, that's something he's been doing for quite some time. So I guess we're a little confused if, if, if this is an existing non-conforming use and it's only, it would only be considered a, a use that needs to be registered as if it was already a registered use. I guess I'm confused. The ordinance says all non, you know, basically all uses that constitute a contractor yard that have not been registered, come to the town and register them, and that's what we're trying to do, I mean.
But there was a date on that.
August first, two thousand twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess we're confused.
Through the chair?
Yes, go ahead Ted.
I guess maybe, maybe we should go back to the, to the basics here and say, Rick, what is Bentley's principal desire in making a contractor yard two out there at that, at that facility on his property?
He was asked to fill the application out and with the understanding that this would, this would make him a compliant use, that if he didn't do this, he would not be in compliance. That was the understanding of the whole process.
Then I think the planning board needs, I think we need to redefine a few things here, because a contractor yard two is a principal place of business for building, construction, or landscape contractor offering a fleet of four or more construction, commercial vehicles and customarily consisting of office, display areas, storage yards for building supplies. The point being that it's a business, that he is running Bentley Warren Construction out of that particular location, that it would be a place where he would operate no differently than several other contractors that we have in town, such as, forgive my use of the names, but for instance, Phil Labby or Mark Walsh, any of those, in which basically, it appears to me that the planning board didn't, has never had a problem with Bentley Warren storing his equipment and using that equipment as part of the campground construction. I think that was always understood, and that was part of the permits that were issued for that campground, and the planning board understood that. In getting a contractor yard two, I think what Rich is talking about is if you were to designate that, that he could run, run his trucks out of there as a contractor yard with no limitations on that, and I think that's where the heartburn is coming from.
So where does that put, I guess I'm still a little confused. If, if, if you're saying he doesn't have to register, he has trucks there that he uses on the campground, they park trucks there overnight, and Andy can jump in here, they park trucks overnight on their way up from the pit in Massachusetts or something, and then take off in the morning, the trucks are there parked. It's not, as far as we know, it's not registered as a separate entity, but the use is, I mean, and there are trucks on site.
But even, even the use, he's not operating a commercial facility on his property. That is nothing more than a storage facility for use in the campground. If you, if, if he wants a contractor yard two, when I look at that, contractor yard two means you are operating a business selling materials to other places. You might be like, like a landscaper who has a bunch of equipment there and stores a bunch of materials and picks them up and goes out and does work and comes back at the end of the day. That's never been what I understood was taking place out there. What was taking place out there was, was a place for him to store materials and equipment for the expansion of the campground. That's not the same thing as a contractor yard two.
Right, and just to be clear, and Andy, are you still on?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, maybe you could speak to the sort of uses. I would say that it's more than just the campground, but is that correct? But, but there are vehicles there and there's materials stored. I mean, if we don't need to register and it's a compliant use.
Who told you you had to register?
Bentley, Bentley was, and I'm not-
Bentley got a letter in the mail.
Yeah, he got an application in the mail, to file the application, went to the town hall and just thought he could fill the application out and I think he must have met with Jim, I'm assuming, and there was more to it than just filling the application out. And so we got our team together and said, no, geez Bentley, there's quite a bit more to this than just filling out a form. And it's, it's quite a process here. So we put, you know, what we thought was a pretty thorough application together. And I can, you know, I've got the plans, I know you've all seen the plans, but I can put them up on the screen if you'd like, anytime here, I've got them all ready to go. So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place as to what we should be doing. Ted, do you have any thoughts on that?
I'm thinking that if it's used principally as, as a construction entity for the campground, then there's, the planning board has said, yeah, you can stage in your own property. And if you're using it for messing around on this property like he has, he's made substantial improvements to his property, and I know he's used his own equipment, I don't see that as an issue, but if you were, I think where the planning board is having heartburn is if he operates as a contractor yard which is in business all the time in the town of Arundel, then he's got to register. And the problem then is you should be, you should have been, to be an existing one, you should have been legally conforming when you started. And I think that's the heartburn that the planning board is having right now.
Let's, let's say for devil's, you know, argument here. If that was a contractor yard and it being operating as, what he's been doing, he's been doing reportedly for thirty-five years, since nineteen eighty-four. Storing trucks, bringing trucks up, storing them overnight, that sort of thing. He's got a few trucks on site, construction equipment, and that predates the campground. And if he was doing that and he was an operator, he had an entity, a legal operating entity as a contract, you know, some sort of a landscape business, let's just say, but was never registered because there wasn't a process. What would be different about that now, it would still be a legally, I guess, non-conforming, because it hadn't been registered business, correct, and he wanted to come to the planning board to register so he can be legally compliant. So the only, you're saying the only difference here is it's not a separate business entity, but the uses are the same, but it's not a separate business entity by definition.
Well, I think the issue for the planning board has been that-
Can't hear you Ted.
Sorry Marty, am I too far away? So I'm getting reverb from Jens here. The, I think the issue really is whether this, if he was operating a contractor yard in this area, he needed permits back as, as far as nineteen eighty-six. I asked Jim about this, and apparently this was a residential area. And the, Jim produced, I asked him, can you show me any permits or anything? And he produced a letter from Paul Quinn, I guess, who was the owner of the property who Bentley bought it from, in which Paul put up that, that first building, that forty by sixty, or as you accurately portrayed it, forty-one by sixty-seven foot building there. I got a permit for that and it was limited to personal use only and not for business use. And it was listed as a residential use, so he didn't get a, Paul didn't get a permit for, for doing any kind of work out of there. He could store his own equipment, but it was for personal use and not for business purposes. And I, I looked through the file, asked Jim, what do you have on the file for, for in-between? Is there a time when this became permitted or permitted by somebody? And all of the building and all of the site development permits that were in there indicated they were residential uses. That, that's where the, the issue really boils down to is that if it was a business, it never got permitted as it was required to be back then, because back in, what, I think nineteen eighty-seven, all non-residential activities had to be permitted as a conditional use in this town. The only thing that wasn't was a single-family home, or duplex, I think, was the other one. So, so Jim couldn't find up, find anything else in there that, in which Bentley was doing a business out of there, or Paul is doing a business out of there, or I think Paul was the one that Bentley bought the property from, at least that's what the file shows. So that's, I think, the concern, if Bentley's got any information, that, because our records are limited, and Jim admitted that, if Bentley's got something better that can prove that, that was permitted, then, then we've got a legally non-conforming use. But right now, all we've got is permits that say it was supposed to be a residential use. And if we have a residential use that was permitted for, and this is for legally, legally non-conforming uses at that time, then the question is, how can, how can we register a legally non-conform, illegally non-conforming use? And that is, that's the fundamental question I think the planning board is concerned about at this point.
So through the chair, then, what we're saying then is that he has a use, call it a personal use for trucking, equipment, whatever, and call it personal. He can continue to do that and he's still in an R2 district and everything's fine, he's in conformance and compliance is a personal use. So there's, you're saying there's no need to register that, but there's also no, nowhere for the worst, because he's, it's allowable on his lot to continue to do what he's doing. I mean, he was, he was, you know, he was told, or given an application to come before the board, and, you know, we tried to have a staff meeting, or, you know, I know a meeting with you Ted before the COVID thing all hit, to sort this out. So we thought we were doing the good thing, the right thing.
Well, I appreciate your, your coming and doing the right thing. The issue that I have is that the facility that is out there, we were told on more than one occasion that the purpose of that material and those vehicles were for campground. And we went, okay, that's fine, it's not a commercial operation. If a contractor yard two is a commercial operation, if he wants a contractor yard two, he's never had one before. He's never had a contractor yard, so he can't be grandfathered in. He can't say that while I did all of this stuff, he needs to come and apply with a complete application for contractor yard two. And he needs to look at it and determine whether or not he would be qualified in that district. If all he's going to do is use that to service the campground, I don't know why he's here.
Yeah, Andy?
I agree. I, yes, Rick?
Go ahead. Yeah, do you want to add something Andy, in terms of your, how you see it being used?
At, at this point, I don't. We are doing most of our work in the campground with what equipment is there, but, but I, I, you know, I can't say too much right now. I know Bentley has had trucks there for the last twenty-plus years occasionally before we started the campground, and I think that was his concern that maybe they're overnight or stockpile a load here or there. But most of the work that I, that's gone on there since I've been up there for the last fifteen years has been in, in conjunction with working on his own personal property and the campground.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Yeah Marty.
I don't think, but does Bentley have any plans to expand to Maine? If he does, then maybe he wouldn't need a contractor yard. Otherwise, it's personal and they don't need to be here.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, I agree Marty, if he's got plans to expand out his business and start using that as a contractor yard and using it for other purposes other than the storage for the, for the campground, then yes, he, it would be a contractor yard that he would have to apply for. He'd have to go through, jump through all of the hoops that are in the registry, the regulations, and act accordingly. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it. I look at it right now and I go, I don't understand why he's here.
I feel the same way. If he's going to start hauling gravel or doing excavation from that facility outside the campground, then he would have to apply for a contractor yard two. But just using it for his personal use, no need of it.
Okay.
I would say, or, or the campground, because the planning board, when you gave the approval for the campground, also gave approval for him to stage equipment at his facility. His private property and staged from there, because there's a direct connection, as you recall, between the, that, that property and the campground. So-
And through the chairs.
Feel about that, as we recall, you know?
Right, and to be, and to be clear, just to be clear, that it's more than, you know, those parked trucks there that aren't related to the campground, but like Andy said, the bulk of it is related to it. Whether he intends to expand, I guess we, I don't, Andy can chime, I don't believe he intends to expand what he has.
I can't, I can't speak for Bentley Warren, but, you know, I don't see any plans on that right, right now.
As, as, as long as, Rick, as long as you and Andy and Bentley understand that if he expands, he has to come back before the planning board. Because then it's going to become a full-blown operate, a commercial operation. The way he's got it set right now, I don't see his needing to come before us.
Okay.
Any comments Jens?
I've been listening, but I, I wouldn't be involved in making any decisions or recommendations here. I've assisted Bentley through his daughter on property matters.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. I, I did not know that and I'm, thank you for doing the right thing. How about you Tom? Comments?
No, as far as I recall, this was just a staging ground for the campground, but if, once the campground's completed, which might be years, I'm just curious what the plans are. Is he planning on making use of that for the future? I guess that's a question for Rick and Andy.
I, through the chair, I don't know, like I said, I know there are trucks there, Andy can speak, there are trucks there that they use to go to the saloon to, you know, take things to the saloon, so it's, it's not just the campground, but I think the focus is the campground, but we can't say it's just the campground, but we'd have to talk to Bentley, I don't, I mean, I can say what I believe, but we'd have to go through Bentley to ascertain it, but there's no intention to make it a commercial use, a separate commercial use, it's to continue doing what he has been doing for thirty-five years.
We, we, we just want it to be compliant with the town's wishes.
Yeah.
So I do have another, a completely separate question for you Rick. He's supposed to be coming to see us for renewal of the campground permit.
Yes.
Any idea when he's-
We'd love to talk to you about that, through the chair, we, actually, we are on board with that. And if the board is willing to entertain a discussion just for a second about that, since we're all together here.
Well, the discussion, the only reason I brought it up is because it's been three years since he was before us and it's time for him to come back. So he needs to submit the application, and that was the only, only point I wanted to bring up.
And that, and we're aware of that, and it's on our clock, July seventh, I think, was the date. So we, we intended that, the one issue with that, there are two issues. One is the ASBILs for the work thus done are on Jim's desk, I think Ted, you've got a copy as well. We've submitted the ASBILs for the phase under construction, waiting for those to be approved. They were submitted a month or two ago, and the only issue that has come up is that one of the three conditions you recall is that he do a traffic count after the three-year period. And he's not operational, so should we ask for, we, some, under the COVID situation, we have a situation, we can't meet the criteria for a traffic count because there's nothing to count. And what we are intending to submit, we're perfectly aware of the three-year timeframe, and we're on board to pull an application together. Is that something we can write through the planner, to the chair, or to the planning board and just request relief on that? Because there's, we can't possibly meet that criteria for the traffic if there's nothing going on.
I, I see, I see nothing that says that you can't ask us to.
Okay, we'll do that. But we're aware of the application and the other requirements, and we intend to submit an application as soon as we get the ASBIL for phase two A approved.
Excellent, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does the board have anything else for the applicant?
You got to sit through a whole application, you got to sit through this whole thing and get that containment.
We're trying to be, we were trying to do good. I mean, that was the direction he was given to come in and we're trying to do good and be good by the planning board. And he's telling us to go home, so I guess we'll go home.
No, sounds good. Call it in early.
Go home.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, good night.
Next item up on the agenda, as soon as the agenda- Next item up on the agenda, as soon as the agenda comes back up. Rundle Children's Garden, a major conditional use application determination of completeness, a proposal to operate a 24 child, four-staff daycare center in a 2,460 square foot existing building known as the Grange with associated parking and an X and an existing four-unit apartment complex on a 2.53 acre parcel, tax map 39 lot 15, located at 34 Arundel Road in the Townhouse Center District. Arundel Grange LLC is the owner applicant and Robert Metcalf of Mitchell and Associates is the applicant's agent. And I see Mr. Metcalf is here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And Mr. Fitzpatrick is here as well. First off, we just want to indicate that in the letter that we also submitted the application that, you know, we were coming through for the tax amendment to look at being able to increase the density for apartments. John's overall intention is to still pursue that, but due to the length of time to go through that process and the, the unknown question of when a town meeting will occur and when that, and if that gets adopted. Right now, the bike shop has left the, the Grange and to address financial concerns and prudent planning, he was approached, I believe it was a couple of months ago, correct me if I'm wrong, John, uh, for daycare, daycare use in there. So proceeding with that and it will continue looking at his plans to be able to create the apartment use in there once things become clearer in terms of the, the zoning. So with that, the conditional use that we're vying for is for the, a daycare facility. There are no plans to make any changes to the site whatsoever. Uh, it's completely served by all its utilities and in Ted's memo to, to the board, that pretty much covers everything. The existing buildings, the rear is a four-unit apartment building that had been used as dormitory. There were eight bedrooms in there. Uh, the front building did have an approval for an apartment in the second floor and the owner of the daycare, operator of the daycare would be residing in that apartment. And of course, the daycare would be on the first floor. The side, the side improvements we have shown on the plan really delineate the parking spaces, handicap accessibility. Uh, we have shown where the light fixtures are that illuminate the parking lot. Uh, there is again, there are no plans for any type of improvements other than those elements. Uh, I know that Ted had raised the question, we had not requested a waiver for planting of trees along the roadway. And that was my, I guess I just missed that without any anticipation that we're doing improvements. That we would need to request a waiver for that. Uh, there are power lines as Ted indicated. Uh, and at this point, I guess we would ask a consideration of the board to weigh the requirement to add any additional trees along the road frontage. Uh, one of the other points that Ted had raised is regards to the buffering between the adjacent residential property on the parking lot side. Uh, the light fixtures that are on the building, there are three along that parking lot side that are full cutoff, the side shields that are all directed down towards the parking. And the separation between the lots adjacent and the face of the existing Grange is approximately 200 feet. And there is a wooded buffer in between there, which it ranges between 48 and 62 feet wide, depending on the relationship of the building and the side lot line, which is not parallel with the building. So there is substantial screening in the sense of the lights for the parking lot. Uh, and would entertain during a site walk to, to review that. At this time, reason to add any additional, but again, that's part of the discussion we would have with the board. Uh, the waivers that were requested primarily is we're not doing any work, so we don't need topographic survey, stormwater management plan. We're not making any additional improvements. So the impervious cover that's there right now is what's been there since I believe was in prior to when the Hartwood School was there. Uh, fire protection documentation, there isn't existing fire suppression system in the building and John can clarify for me, uh, that that system has actually been going through some upgrade or repairs, uh, and should be fully functional. I believe it was sourced about the end of this week or the beginning of next week. So basically what we're asking for was a waiver submitting all the information regarding the design and the equipment for fire suppression system, which had been approved by the town for prior use of the building. Uh, the outdoor lighting plan, as I said, we've identified them on the bill, on the plan where the light fixtures are. I don't have any information on the lighting elements themselves in terms of the type of fixture. Uh, we can obviously observe that when we walk the site, but it is controlled down towards the, the parking and the travel way. Uh, sign permit waiver is primarily, we don't know what the sign design is going to be, but it's probably going to wind up being where the existing sign is now. It was for the bike shop. And when I drove by the other day, I noticed, I think it says Hartwood School again, which must've been the sign that was the, the bike shop was just put on over. So we're just asking a waiver of that submission right now and that the actual sign, uh, when a daycare has their sign, they'll come in for a permit for the actual sign design and in conformance with the town's ordinance. And then a market study, we're asking a waiver for that. There's a significant demand for daycares in this state. I know I'm just going through that with, I have a, a son and daughter-in-law who just had our first grandchild and they were on several waiting lists to try and get into daycare. So it is a high demand. And I believe actually in the conversation with Ted, I think he had mentioned to me that there had been at least one other individual had asked him about the possibility that they could take their location. So, and then the fiscal impact study, uh, it's a minor use in terms of demands on the, the public infrastructure. They're not impacting the school system. There really is no additional requirements in management from emergency vehicle standpoint. Uh, trash would be by a private hall, so it's not part of the town services. So we've asked for a waiver of that particular element as well. And then one other that we had put in our application was a request for a condition of approval, uh, that this is a situation where the certificate for the daycare operation, she can't get the certificate, so she has an approval for a location. So it's kind of one of these, cart before the horse deal. Uh, so she can't apply fully for the license until she has the location laid, uh, certified as a usable space. So those are the, uh, basically the overall summary of the application. Uh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And John's here to respond to anything that I can answer.
From my, from my perspective, the, of, of all of the waivers that you've asked for, the only one that would be unacceptable to me would be the, the fire department waiver. NFPA Life 101, you need to get permission from the, the fire department for whatever it is you're going to do out there. And I would, I, I would encourage you to get that letter. And just, just, just a letter that says the chief's been there, he's seen it, he's happy with it.
Oh, we could do that. It's just the way the ordinance was written. It talked about having all this documentation submitted. That's why we're requesting a waiver, having to provide all the mechanical information for the fire system. We have no problem with us getting in touch with the fire chief.
Yeah. If the chief, if the chief is happy with it, they have no problem granting the waiver. If the chief is not happy, then yeah, no, I don't want to grant that waiver.
That's fine. We can do that. That's easier to go after than the detail that I interpreted from the ordinance that was required. So.
And Rich, on that, on that issue, the daycare owner who wants to rent the building from me, she can't get her state certification unless she's complied with the state fire marshal code requirements.
Right. And that's the same code that I believe Arundel has adopted.
Right. So we are, you know, the, even if it wasn't a requirement, I wouldn't rent the building out without a full fire suppression system. The building's fully sprinkled. It's going to be, it's a, it's a totally automated smoke and fire detection system. There's a smoke detector in every room, pull stations at every exit door, and it's going to be, the whole system's going to be monitored by Maine State Security and Dayton. So we'll have, we'll have better fire protection and suppression than most any other commercial facility around, particularly including some daycares. So I'm in complete agreement with you on that. We will be addressing that.
From my perspective, as I said, from my point of view, that's the, the one waiver that you asked for that's like, you know, I'm sorry, the fire department has to be involved. And if we waived it, then they would not have to be involved.
I appreciate my consultant, Bob Metcalf, throwing some mud against the wall and seeing what sticks, but he spoke so fast, I didn't even quite hear that. But thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Never hurts to ask.
Right.
And any of the planning board have any other questions at this point for the applicant?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Right. I think the next step is for us to schedule a site walk.
How about before the next meeting? Two weeks from time.
We, we could do that. Under, under the governor's, um, latest set of rules, we could do a socially distant site walk.
Yeah. Anytime you'd like to, uh, you pick the time and the date and I can meet you there for sure.
The next meeting is on the 28th. Somebody make a motion and schedule a time and we can show up.
Rich, one question first.
No, Marty.
Where are we? Are we doing a Zoom meeting next meeting? Or are we, so that we all, if we are, we all have to get back to our individual spots so we can be at the meeting?
Right. I agree. Yeah. At, at this point, we're going to have to, to do a Zoom meeting. We still can't get into the schools until after the beginning of June.
Uh, Rich, you're not talking about doing the site visit the day of the 28th, are you?
Unless these gentlemen can, and lady can do it at some other point, yes.
Oh, okay. So, well, whatever, whatever you can arrange, I can, I can arrange it on my end as well.
Yeah, I'm available.
Yeah, I could do that. What, how much time you think we'd need? I figure we should end there by 6:30.
Yeah. So if we met there by six, we could probably get everything accomplished by 6:30, you think, Ted?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's nothing major over there. I'll make a motion then that we schedule site, six o'clock on the 28th.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to schedule a site walk for Thursday, May 28th at 6:00 PM. Any discussion? Susan just tipped her mic down, her video down. I don't think she liked.
I'm going to put it on my calendar on my desktop. Sorry about that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Second on that? Who seconded that? I'm sorry.
Who seconded that motion? Was it Susan?
I think I did.
Okay.
And we're, it's six o'clock.
Six o'clock at the ground.
Massive gloves.
Yeah. Everybody bring your PPEs. Yep. Bring your mask. Good enough. Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Land use ordinance, a discussion, proposal to amend land use ordinance, section 3.2, definition of front lot, a corner lot to be restricted to only one street. I believe you should have some information that Ted sent out on that.
Yeah. So I have a question about that.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand why Roger Tesoro wants to do that, but, um, is there any drawback to the homeowner not to have, uh, you know, frontage on both? Or is it a detriment to the homeowner because the setbacks would be on each street? Or explain the reason. Is it just setbacks and it's taking too much property? Or I'm trying to understand why it's so important to have just frontage on one street as opposed to both?
Well, you have to define the front line, the front lot line. And, and it can, you can define the front lot line on either street, but the ordinance requires a 100-foot setback from the front lot line.
Well, only one district. That's only on the, uh, that, that's only, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but that's only on Route 111, I believe, that you have to have 100-foot setback.
Correct.
You know, in other places, it's 25 feet. For instance, the DB1 district, it's 25 feet.
But I, I, I think part of the bigger issue is, is the side lot let setback. If, if you had some place that was on Limerick Road and a private way coming off there. I can't think of any private ways. I, I drive by them all the time and I see them. But if the front lot line is Route 111, uh, is Limerick Road, you have to be 75 feet back from Limerick Road. If you have Acme private way as a side lot, that's only 15 feet. If you build that close, you're going to have problems with site distance. You're also going to have a problem with the fact that your, if that's your front lot line, you have to be 100, uh, 75 feet back from that private way to make your front lot line. It's going to make your sideline on Limerick Road 15 feet away from the road. Probably not a wise idea.
Rich?
Yeah, Marty.
I thought it was 50 feet for any house dwelling. You have to be a minimum of 50 feet back from the road.
It depends what, through the chair, you know, it's which zone we're in. I mean, some zones like the R1 district are considerably less setback than, let's say, the R4 district where you have a setback from 111 of 100 feet. And that's for aesthetic purposes that were done back in 2005 and, uh, in an attempt to create a more spacious feel. And the, uh, otherwise in the R4 district, which is the rural conservation districts, for instance, it's usually 50 feet. So. On the district, it depends on whether you're on an arterial and it depends on whether or not you're, you've got a, uh, what district you're in.
And is it discretionary, Ted? Does the owner get to pick which one they want to be the front lot line and which one the side lot line?
I, that is something the board has, has, has got to deal with. I, because, um, I don't have any real specifics. I think Roger had mentioned this before, the board did not really consider it. We brought it up before and he had brought it up in a select ones meeting again. And I told him I'd bring it back to the board and that's why it's in front of you again. Um, the, the issue, the specifics are that it would, uh, basically it would be something that the, the owner can either choose or else we have a standard for which one you should have the lesser setback from. Probably, you know, what I just threw out because Dan DuBois asked me for some language. I threw out that it would be obviously the one that has the higher level of traffic or is a higher, higher, um, intensity would probably have the, be the front yard setback. Uh, so if you're on route, if you're on 111, um, you probably wanted, wanted the setback from, um, the front yard to be on the higher, uh, traffic load, which would be 111 versus, um, let's say New Road, which, which, well, that's, that's close to an arterial, but it's still a local road. But you, your lesser would be on the less traveled road because there'd be less impact on you. It could be also based on, on topography. Remember that roads in, in Arundel, we're not urban. We're suburban or rural. All of our ditches and our, our, our utilities are within that right of way. So your distance from that right of way, depending on when they put the utilities in the right of way, um, the closer you are to it, of course, there's more of a chance of it being a, a nuisance to the homeowner to have the utilities and the ditches that close. And you remember what happened with Stony Brook, where they didn't like it so much that they filled in the ditches and put in pipes, which has caused great deal of consternation for everybody. Um, so I, you know, it's, it's something that needs to be explored. I think Roger's main concern was that it was a, it might be an unnecessary use of land or taking up land to have that much land to have two frontages. But that's the way the ordinance has been written. Um, and I asked Jim for his input on it, um, because it is a zoning issue, he being the zoning code enforcement officer. He basically informed me that, uh, that it's a standard in the state of Maine, that the front lot line is whatever, is the lot line that's facing a street. So the only difference on a corner lot is that you've got two streets. You've got the intersection of two streets there. Um, and that's why you have that situation. And that's why you have that situation. Now, you probably remember Roger had also brought up a concern about private ways. Where a person who owns a lot and has a private way put in next to them now suddenly has a, a front lot line or is, is fronting a street that they wasn't of their own creation and suddenly they're going to be penalized because they have to have the front lot setback on a road they can't even use. So the planning board took care of that, I believe it was last year. We took care of that by putting in a provision that that if we're, if somebody were in that situation and somebody put in a, a neighbor put in a private way next to you, your land, and you had no rights to use it, then, then you would consider that a side lot line. And you would only have to meet the side lot line standard in the event you were to build on your land later. So you wouldn't be penalized by somebody else putting in a road next to you. In this situation, it's just where it is, is when you do a subdivision or you do a lot split, when you're at an intersection of two roads. Currently, it's, it's considered to be a corner lot. That's the definition. And Jim tells me that's pretty much universal throughout the state of Maine. So the issue is looking at what the advantages and disadvantages would be to making a street designate what street, under what circumstances are, should be the the lot line that is a side lot line instead of a front lot line. And that's the issue that you folks need to grapple with.
Well, but as you said, topography might play a role in terms of how you place the, the building and so on and so forth. So.
Yeah, people have these, we're in Kansas, but we're not. So.
So then, but once you choose the front, then the other street automatically becomes the side, right?
Right.
So is it automatic or are they both considered front?
Right now, they're both considered front. What we would do from here would be if the board wants to consider this, then you have to come up with some standards under which, which situation a, another, one of the streets becomes a side lot line. One could be, one alternative could be the ARPICs. In which case you'll, you know, it could be determined by those existing conditions. Another would be the planning board or the code enforcement officer or the road commissioner, you know, makes that decision. Or the one that I threw out because Dan asked me to throw you know, what are you thinking? I said, well, how about the side lot line would be the, the road that has the least amount of traffic. That makes sense. Less impact on the, on the, on the property owner. And of course, no property owner is required to, to have meet that setback as the maximum. That's the minimum setback. You want to set way back, that's your decision. That's your, your call.
If I remember correctly, the issue that came up a year and a half or two years ago dealt with a corner lot that was where this guy's building would have been within the setback, the 100-foot setback from the private way on the side or, or the sideline. And because the ordinance said he had two roads, he had to have it 100 feet back. So we made an adjustment to the ordinance to solve that particular problem. Now we're, now we're being asked again to, to adjust the problem. And I personally, I think we should just define what the front lot line is. You know, and say it's on, the front lot line is the line, is the road that has the most traffic. You know, because if you're on a, if you're on a private way or if you're on a small side street, it's never going to have the most traffic. It makes more sense for the front lot line to have the most traffic so that you are set furthest back at that point. Just my opinion. Yeah, Tom?
I, I agree with that. I think that's the way to go. But I, if the owner chooses to, to change it, would there be a downside to allowing, to allowing the owner to make the, the call?
Why don't we allow the owner to make the call right from the get-go?
Yeah.
He owns the lot. Let him pick the, the one he wants for a front line.
Yeah.
Yep. We can, we can do that.
Well, once he designates a front. But once he designates a front line, then the other one automatically becomes
A sideline.
A side lot, a side lot, property line.
Yeah. And it, and it becomes permanent. It's a one-time choice only.
Yeah. Unless you pick it up and put it on a new foundation.
Or tear the house down or the building down.
Question. Question, turn around. Your front main property line would also be your 911 address line, but does that stop the owner of the property to use the sideline as access to, I say, a garage that's out back, not along the side?
Usually, and that's a really good question, Marty. And maybe consulting, consulting with the 911 addressing officer, which is Wendy, wouldn't be a bad idea on that. Because the addressing often is based on where the actual access to the house is. So not, so the emergency crews don't get a false address in which there's no access to that lot from that location. So I think 911 would pay no attention to what's the front lot line. They would probably pay attention to where's the driveway entrance that I can pull my ambulance into? But that's something that I would want to consult with Wendy on. I'm pretty sure that's how she does it. But I'm, I don't want to assume that. But it's a good point.
So should we wait and let you ask Wendy and then revisit this?
I think, yeah. If we're gonna, if we're gonna take any action on this, we're gonna have to do it by the next meeting. We're gonna have to at least, you know, come up with an idea. If you want me to come up with several concepts, I could do that. I already came up with one. We can come up with several others and ask Wendy on which, which one meets her criteria. Which I think is going to be basically the driveway. But again, you know, I'll find out from her which one, which one she prefers. And then of course, you know, there's always the person who decides, you know, they want an address because it's a, it's a it's a more prestigious address on this road than it is on that road. That usually overrides those folks one way or the other. So.
Well, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think the owner of the property should pick which way is front and which way is side. And I don't think both should be front. I think that is overkill. So I think you should ask Wendy and I would make it, like Tom said, a discretionary one-time choice. And one would be a front lot line and one would be a side lot line and call it a day.
I think that's, that's a good idea. You know, let, let the landowner make their decision. And I, I don't have a problem letting the landowner make a choice. I think if we were to make the choice, we would say that it has to be on the, on the, the road with the most traffic. But if the land, if the homeowner is gonna, if Marty's favorite Harvey homeowner is going to make the choice, then let the homeowner make that decision.
He's gotta live there.
That's right.
Yeah.
He's paying the taxes.
As long as, as long as he's not creating, I mean, one thing, the only thing I worry about sometimes, especially in our density denser neighborhoods that we're gonna get, maybe. Want to do one acre subdivisions now. Is the whole concept of a corner lot is where you have an intersection of two streets. It's different than it is any other kind of lot. You're, you've got an intersection of two streets. You've got lights. You've got intersection of utilities. You have intersection of ditches. You have cars. I don't want to use that one. I was just thinking about our intersection at the fire station. Which didn't work out so well. And that was, well, that was setback at least 20 feet. So, um, yeah, I, I think I'd like to, I'd like to talk to Wendy and I'd like to play with a couple of ideas and get them to you by the next meeting.
Yeah.
It'll work. Okay. And I'll confer with Roger too on, on, on this and Jim, because Jim's the one who's gonna enforce it as well.
Question.
Sure.
Chair. Question is, is Roger still on?
No, he's not.
He was with Velma's iPad prior. I don't know if he's still on or not.
No, he was over with Kristen.
He was at Kristen's iPad.
But Velma's still here.
Velma is still here. Yes.
Yeah.
But that, but that's why if, if he's, might want to chime in, if he's there, if he's still with, over there on the iPad with Velma.
I don't think he was ever on the iPad.
I think he was with Kristen.
It's with Kristen.
Marty.
Oh, I thought they was on the same iPad.
No, he was, he was over at Kristen's house.
I'm sorry.
To be fair to him, I think maybe we should put it on a little sooner on the agenda so he can, so he can participate. Because he's got to go, go to work early in the morning. So next time we do this, we should put it a little farther up on, earlier on the agenda so he can participate.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay.
And any, any other ideas on this particular section of the ordinance? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to the last, well, the next of the last section. You all saw the letter from the town attorney. When we went through the whole discussion of the citizen petition and the standards that we wanted to put into the land use ordinance. Well, the town attorney came back. I ended up having to go to the selectman to, to explain our rationale for having done that. This, the selectman said we should go back and we should talk with the town attorney. So we went back to the town attorney. She met with Ted and with Keith. And she doesn't think it should be in the land use ordinance at all. The state statute should govern or the selectman should create their own petition standards that they could have. Fine with me. Take it out of the land use ordinance.
That's one less thing we have to worry about. It should be, what she had talked about was making it an amendment to the charter that wouldn't require a charter commission because it should be in the charter. She said this shouldn't, doesn't belong in the land use ordinance. This belongs in the charter. Because the citizen petition doesn't just apply to the land use ordinance. It applies to any ordinance in the town of Arundel. And therefore, limiting it to land use ordinance puts us in liability. It puts us in a situation where the town could be in a little bit of trouble, especially, especially with the standards. Now the selectman can put in those verification standards that they want, need, if it's in the charter. But she doesn't believe that there's any verification standards that are justified in the subdivision, excuse me, in the land use ordinance. And that's why she recommended to Keith and to the town to get out of the zoning ordinance or the land use ordinance and get it into either a charter or a selectman ordinance. One of the two. She prefers a charter amendment.
And I don't have a problem with it.
I don't either.
So do we have to vote on that?
Well, you have to take it to town. You have to take, first of all, we have to take it, you can vote on that, which is pretty easy. It's a delete. And the second thing would be then we have to have a public hearing on it. And we have to schedule that out. If we make the July 15th deadline, then we're gonna have to have a public hearing sometime in June.
Well, no, it, I guess it depends on how all of you feel. But if we, if we have a, if we vote to delete section 1.8.2C, the petition citizen standards out of the land use ordinance, we could schedule a public hearing in two weeks.
Yeah.
We could do it and, and say, you know, we're gonna follow the town's, town attorney's directive, which I think is a good idea. She is the, the attorney. Even if I disagree with her a lot of the time. But we, we could remove that and then go straight to a public hearing and have it ready in advance of whenever we're going to have a town meeting.
I like that.
I can do it in two weeks. I can't do it.
Question.
I, how, hang on just for a sec. How come?
Because I needed to get 13 days prior to the meeting and I have to give the paper adequate time to, to be able to post it, which means I would have to have them post it tomorrow. There's no way they're gonna post it tomorrow.
Oh, it has to be, I, I didn't realize it had to be posted 13 days before.
It has to, it's state law. It's got to be posted 13 days. I have to advertise it 13 days prior to the public hearing. And then again, seven days prior to the public hearing. So I have to post it twice in the newspaper.
Okay. So we could, we could have it in June.
I want to make, make it.
June 11th.
That would be the absolute way this we could do because the selectmen have got to put it in the book and the warrant. You might want to stick, stick the, I don't, we'll see what happens with the corner lot on there too. But gives us a little bit of time to, I mean, you could say right now, you approve, let's do the public hearing right now and we can go with it. And I can have it, I can have it published and ready for the June 11th or else we do a, a separate public hearing for it on, on another date. Like June, what is it? June 5th or whatever.
4th.
What? Okay.
Yeah. We, I mean, we could do that. We could have a special meeting for it on, on one of those days or we could just schedule it for the, for June 11th, the first, first planning board meeting in June.
Yeah. I don't have, don't have a lot more applicants. I have a lot of stuff in the hopper, but I don't have, I only have one more new application coming right now, although there's three or four more that will be probably, that won't be able to make it to the next meeting, but will probably be on the hopper by the, by the 11th. So. Yeah, we can do it. We can probably get it all done in one meeting. There was not gonna be, I mean, it's just one item. It's not gonna be huge.
One item, it's not gonna be. I don't think it'll be that much of an issue from, from the town. Because honestly, I think they're going to look at it and say they're taking something out.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Question, if we're taking it out, but we have to have something somewhere. So once that's taken out, something has to be in place. Or if we take it out and they don't have, and if it's not in place, then there's no, nothing to be able to put a petition out on.
It's a state statute.
State statute would, that would take precedence at that point.
Doesn't matter if there isn't a municipal one. There's a state statute that says any citizen has a right to make a petition to the municipal officers at, at any time. And it's not just the zoning ordinance. It's, it's anything.
Yes, but Joe Public has to know about it.
That's true. That would be something that, that, that's a good question to pose to the selectman. I mean, how soon can they, can they move on that? I, I, you know, I haven't talked to Keith to see what he's doing on it. I told him that we were, we were gonna get this out if we could and take care of this problem. Because we have thought we had a liability that we should get rid of as soon as possible. So I should ask him if he's gonna talk to the selectman about setting up a, either a charter amendment or a selectman ordinance that will cover everything, including our, our, our zoning ordinance. We cover that. We cover transfer fees. We cover anything.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Next question is, does that mean that we do not have to help write changes for a petition to change something?
No.
As in the past, as in the past, where they've had a choice, the, the three different choices.
No, if, if, if they want to come to us and ask us to help them draft that ordinance, we could do that.
Okay. But it's not restricting us. That's what I'm asking.
No, it's not saying that we can't help.
We've done that before. I mean, that's how we got through the seasonal prodigies. That's how we got through Kate's butter. Those are all things we worked with the applicant on.
Yeah, that's before. But if they change it around.
This is still the same process.
It's, it would be the same process.
Okay.
The big, the big difference is that we could help them write the ordinance, but they would still have to go out and collect signatures on it. It would not be coming from us.
Correct.
From the selectman. And what, what I'd like is, is somebody to make a motion to repeal land, land use section 1.8.2.2C so that we can vote on that and then Ted can get busy working on setting meeting. Okay, Tom made the motion, Marty moved?
Second.
Who, who made that second?
I did.
Marty did, okay. Tom made the motion, Marty seconded it. Any discussion? I want to know what the lawyer thinks. Sorry, Enz.
Well, I, I think you've got, you've got some input from the lawyer, right?
Yes. This, this came from, from the town attorney.
Is there anything, you think there's anything that, that her response didn't answer? Does it leave any, any, Maggie, I mean, I think she, I think she was responsive?
I thought she, I thought she was very responsive and she did a great job. She answered the questions that we needed to have addressed.
I thought so too.
Okay, so motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
So I will schedule that for the 11th, correct?
We will have that public hearing on June 11th.
Good.
So what's gonna happen with the town meeting, huh? What, how's that gonna, today, with all the lockdown and everything?
We can ask Velma, she's still here.
I believe that the voting is going to be, I'm thinking it's July 14th and town meeting will be, that should be a Tuesday. And town meeting will be the day after, July 15th is what we're planning on, in the gym at the school.
Okay.
And voting will, yeah, voting will also be in the gym at the school.
And will it be lifted by then?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Town hall's opening on June 1st.
Okay.
That does raise an interesting question because on July 1st, we can have gatherings of up to 50 people. What happens if there's more than 50 people at the town meeting?
Well, you don't expect that, do you?
You know, with a professional Zoom, we can have up to 100 people at a town meeting.
Yeah.
All little squares all over the place. I'd hate to be the town clerk trying to count them up.
You can go and rent one of those monitors that's got 97 screens and put them up on the wall.
Everybody keep your hand up, I gotta count.
Yeah.
It'll take forever.
Okay, is, is there any other business that we need to deal with, Ted?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, could you approve the, approve the minutes? You ran right over them.
I did.
Yeah.
Thank you. Need an approval of the minutes of April 23rd, 2020.
So moved?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Yeah, Tom's abstaining.
Okay, yeah, two abstentions.
So is, uh.
Who are in favor? Cool.
So I have a quick question. Did Corinne have her baby?
I haven't heard anything. I asked, too. I sent out an email and I didn't get an answer, which is extremely, extremely unusual, which means.
Oh, if you hear any, will you let us know?
I will. I, I'll, I'll call her again. I don't want to call.
Probably at the hospital giving birth.
She probably was or else cursing her husband, one of the two.
One of the, isn't, isn't that the same thing?
At the hospital, it probably is.
But I, I will, I will ask her again. I, I, when I didn't get an answer, went, oh, I'm not touching this one.
Okay.
Okay. But I will, I will find out from her and report back to the board because she knows, as all miss her and certainly I do. But I'd like to know, I think we all like to know how it went.
Right.
Big that, big that huge basketball she was carrying around really was.
Oh my God, she's gonna need that chair.
That chair, she's gonna.
She may get in, she may not get out.
From what I understand, from talking to Ted, we have some digital MyLars that need to be signed.
Yes.
And we have some findings of fact that need to be signed as well, correct?
Yes.
I will send you my link to DocuSign tomorrow so that you can, you can then load everything up and send it out to all of us and we can e-sign everything.
Excellent, good.
Get all of that.
It's gonna be a paper, it's not MyLars, there're gonna be paper copies, but those copies can be taken to the registry and they can be filed because the registry before would not take paper. But in the COVID crisis, now they'll take paper.
Okay.
So, we'll scan and sign our own copies and then set, I mean, we'll sign and scan.
You will, you will, no, you'll get them delivered.
Coming DocuSign?
Through DocuSign, yes.
Okay.
So you'll just have to sign it remotely and then it'll forward on to the next person.
Okay.
I'm dumb on that.
Your son will help you, Marty.
Someone, look, we're, we're seeing you, Marty, your, your son's a genius. If you remember the first time you were doing sign language. And now we can hear you, we can see you clearly, you know? He's a genius. And you get to smoke during a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, need a, need a motion to adjourn?
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Gentlemen, have a, yes, good evening.
Hey.
Yeah.